City of Stevens Point zoning board of appeals meeting, recorded June 7, 2022.
Well, thank you all so much for coming to our 2022 installment of the Board of Zoning Appeals. It's been quite a while since we've met. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 16:31 on June 7, 2022. Since we don't have a clerk, could you call the rule?
Yeah, Doc Stater.
Here.
De.
Here.
Mark him as excused. Odoba.
Here.
Tiffany.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
And Klein.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum.
Okay, rule call is finished. We'll go on to the minutes of the November 18, 2021 meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Do I have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve?
Motion by Grayseal. Seconded by?
Yes, seconded.
Ms. Malia? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. To item number three, the presentation by the city attorney on the roles and responsibilities of the zoning board of appeals.
Sure. So I'm not going to belabor a lot of things here today. It's going to be fairly a brief presentation, but obviously we have some new members and just wanted to go over, basically, you know, what is the role of the zoning board of appeals and how does it work? So the briefest of sort of historic introductions here, zoning is actually a relatively modern phenomenon, really originates in the 20th century. And, you know, the basic idea was places where, you know, cities were becoming more complex, larger, more urbanized, and you had a lot more incidents of neighboring land uses not working well together. So the idea was let's create some rules so that we can try to preclude these conflicts from happening in the first place. It's the most basic overview. Went through some constitutional scrutiny. The Euclid case is the most famous. You can literally, our zoning code is what's referred to as Euclidian zoning. The US Supreme Court said, okay, a regulation scheme of this type is permissible, presuming that it, you know, constrains to various other parameters that you have to follow in order to not have it run wrong in terms of constitutional property use rights. So zoning is a constraint on what you can do with your property. And when you're talking about any type of law that's going to do that, you have to have some safeguards in place to ensure that people's rights are respected in a way that that comports with constitutional provisions. So the idea of a one-size-fits-all zoning code obviously would not work, but at the same time, even a many sizes fit most scenario doesn't always work. If you look at our zoning code, it's 100-plus pages. It has a lot of different types of classifications in it, a lot of different exceptions that are written right into it, conditional uses, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But even then, you get strange scenarios where a strict application of the zoning code would tend to look like it leads to an unfair or just unappealing outcome. And that's really where the zoning board of appeals comes in, is to be that sort of safety valve for when a literal application of the code leads to an outcome that just people don't feel satisfied with. So it doesn't mean that everything that goes to the zoning board of appeals should be granted. In fact, most frequently, you'll find the staff recommending that a request is not granted. And I'll go through some of the standards that will be applied here. But the basic nature of the zoning board of appeals is that it's what's called a quasi-judicial body. Now, the quasi part is that you're not judges, you're not a circuit court judge or anything like that. But is judicial in the sense that you have a case that's brought to you, evidence is presented, and then you're asked to apply legal standards to that evidence to come up with an outcome? And much in the way that a judge, when they're doing that, has to explain what their thought process is on arriving at a decision, the zoning board of appeals has to do that as well. You can't just move to deny, take a vote, majority vote, supports it, off you go. You have to be able to articulate why the decision is being made with, by connecting that evidence to the legal standard. Because, A, it's never any good for somebody to not get the outcome they are looking for, but also not get an explanation of why. And also, there is the ability to appeal the decisions, and there needs to be a record of why the decision was made in order for a circuit court judge to review it with any sense of what happened. So in law in general, there's the concept of law and equity, which is kind of a horrid phraseology from England and then from, you know, early American law. It still has some relevance today in certain types of disputes. But the idea is that law is, here are the rules that are written down that say exactly how a scenario should be addressed. And then equity is, well, we don't really have any written down rules, so a judge is just going to look at ideas of fairness. The thing with zoning and especially requests for variances is that usually the law, which there's plenty of, is going to be restrictive, and it's going to tend to say that somebody is not entitled to a variance. You might look at it and say, oh, this is unfair, or this person stumbled into this situation somewhat unknowingly, and you might feel sympathy for that person, which is totally reasonable. But at the same time, you don't really act in equity here. You're acting more like a court applying law. And as I go through some of the standards here, you'll see how that really develops in terms of the principles that are applied. So there's a couple different types of cases that can come before the zoning board of appeals. And some of them are far more common than others. The most common are requests for variances. And I'll get to those in detail in just a moment. But the other ones can be just an appeal of a, this is right from the statute, which is, somebody can allege that there's an error in any order requirement decision or determination made by an official in enforcement of a zoning code, et cetera. Or there are special exceptions that can be granted, but that has to be contemplated in the ordinance itself. We don't have a whole lot of those types of scenarios. Normally, those are handled by our conditional use section, which actually goes to the plan commission and the council instead of the zoning board of appeals. So most of these scenarios that you see are going to be variance requests. Now, there are two types of variances. There are area variances and use variances. Use variances are, I would like to use this piece of property for a type of use that its zoning classification does not allow for. I.e., I want to put a convenience store on my R2 residential property. It's on a really nice corner. I think I'll get a lot of traffic and make a ton of money. And, no, sorry, it's not zoned for that. The standard for granting a use variance is very strict. And it's that, the person has to be able to show that there is, without the use variance, there's no reasonable use of the property. And if it's a property that you can build a house on, well, that's a reasonable use of the property that's available to you. So there aren't actually a ton of cases out there where use variances are granted. It has to be some odd scenarios that would come up. But moreover, you also, in addition to just showing that there'd be this no reasonable use, actually here, let me just read you verbatim here some of this provision from the state statute. It says, "For a use variance, by demonstrating that strict compliance with the zoning ordinance would leave the property owner with no reasonable use of the property in absence of the variance, in all circumstances," so this means for use variances and area variances, "property owner bears the burden of proving the unnecessary hardship, is based on conditions unique to the property rather than considerations personal to the property owner, and that the unnecessary hardship was not created by the property owner." So a couple elements there that are crucial. And again, this part applies to both area and use variances. So the person has to be able to demonstrate that strict compliance... Well, first of all, the applicant, the property owner, bears the burden of proving that all of these elements are present. So if they're unable to do that, really, the city doesn't even have to put on a case, so to speak. We always would, but... So they have to prove that there's an unnecessary hardship, and that it's based on conditions unique to the property rather than considerations personal to the property owner, and that the unnecessary hardship was not created by the owner. So for instance, one that just pops to mind as created by the owner, you buy a good-sized parcel, you subdivide it into two parcels, you sell this one to your neighbor or someone else, you're left with something that's too small to do what you wanted to do on it. Well, you created that problem. If you left it larger and didn't put that buck in your pocket, you would have had enough land to do what you're proposing to do. The element of it requiring conditions unique to the property. If you have a block with residential lots on it that are all substantially similar in shape and size, you know, they're all roughly rectangular, they're all roughly .15 acres, give or take, somebody couldn't come in and say, I have a unique property condition. It's like, no, you don't. There's 55 other lots the same as yours within that same subdivision. So you have to be able to show that there's something physical, I suppose it could be something other than physical, but almost always physical, that is unique to your property. Now, for instance, one of the most more recent Supreme Court cases in Wisconsin relating to variances, I believe came from St. Croix County, and this was a piece of property that was waterfront property on the St. Croix River. And the property itself had like 100-foot-high cliffside. So the property was split into two parts, bluff top, bluff bottom. These people wanted to build a vacation home in the bluff bottom. They couldn't comply with shoreline zoning setback requirements, and the court did find that that was a unique property condition by the presence of the cliff. So at least, the court at least held that they satisfied that part of the criteria here on account of that unique property condition. Other similar types of scenarios could arise from relation to right-of-way, the geometry of the property, you know, if you have a triangular lot as opposed to a rectangular lot, that could bring in some interesting questions with regards to setbacks. Or if you have a property that is surrounded by right-of-way on more than, you know, if it has right-of-way on more than one side or more than two sides, or certainly more than, if you've got the only property on a tiny little block, it might bring in some interesting considerations in terms of setbacks. Obviously, setbacks would relate to an area variance. Unnecessary property, you know, as I said, unnecessary hardship, the courts have actually had some reasonably recent things to say about what that means in the context of an area variance. There had been an earlier case that had tried to, tried to, had established that very difficult no reasonable use standard and applied it to area variances. And then the courts in a very famous case called the Ziervogel case, said, we are getting rid of that, and instead, we are going to establish... Make sure I find the right place here. We're going to establish a new standard for unreasonable hardship as relates to area variances. And I'll just read the quote here. It says, "Area variance applicants need not meet the no reasonable use of the property standard that is applicable to use variance applications. The standard for unnecessary hardship required in area variance cases is whether compliance with the strict letter of the restrictions governing area, setbacks, frontage, height, bulk, or density would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose, or would render conformity with those restrictions unnecessarily burdensome." And then, of course, in all these cases, you know, the unnecessary burden and all that stuff, you do end up taking the general purposes of zoning into consideration, which is you have to evaluate what is the effect on the neighboring properties? What is the effect on the neighboring properties particularly in the light of what the permitted uses are on those properties? So you start looking at, okay, well, this person's asking for a six-foot reduction in a side yard setback on account of a particularly narrow lot. Okay, well, how much does that reduce it compared to what the overall standard is? What impact might that have on the neighboring properties? A lot of fact, or a lot of case-by-case factual analysis would go into these types of things. But the other thing is that a lot of provisions in our zoning code already take these things into account for types of scenarios that come up repeatedly. So for instance, we have what's called the RTND, traditional neighborhood district overlay, which if you just look at Google Maps of Stevens Point or obviously drive around, the older parts of the city are much more dense than some of the newer parts. And you end up with situations where if somebody needs to reconstruct a garage, that's the tip, that's the most typical one we see. The standard setback for the R2 or R3 zoning they're in basically makes it impossible. So instead, we, by conditional use permit, allow people to have a setback that's reduced to one foot, which if you look at a lot of the existing garages that were built back in, you know, the 20s, 30s, whenever it was, in some of these neighborhoods, that's, they're usually pretty close to that sort of distance. They're sitting right on the property line or even closer, or, you know, hopefully not on the wrong side of the property line. So we have some of those sort of safety valves already baked into the code. Those types of things wouldn't come here because somebody can just use that alternative process to get what they're asking for. So just some really basic nuts and bolts about how the board of appeals works. You have to have a quorum in order to act. And once a quorum is assembled, it is a simple majority vote for you to approve things. Appeals must be taken by a person who is aggrieved by a decision, quote, "within a reasonable time." And then the board itself can establish bylaws to state, here is the reasonable amount of time we're setting for somebody, once the decision is made that they disagree with, you know, if it's 30 days, 60 days. I would expect that a court would probably view 30 days as being more or less the minimum reasonable amount of time for something like that. And there are written bylaws that currently exist for the ZBA. We likely will be bringing those to you at some point in the future for review. We had tried to do that a few years ago, and it sort of didn't really make it across the finish line. But that's something that you can, you can look at in the near future. If somebody does file an appeal, any actions the city is taking to enforce the zoning code, writing citations, telling them they have to cease construction, whatever it is, it does stay those. Now, if you had started construction and then found out that you are in violation of the zoning code, it probably wouldn't be wise to continue construction because you're taking the risk with whatever money you put into that. Obviously, that starts to become a little complicated. There is a hard and fast rule, which is if you are issued a building permit, the zoning code as it exists at the time that that permit is issued is what has to be applied. That's sort of the line in the sand for when, you know, if a subsequent zoning change were to happen before you commenced construction, you would be entitled to build it as though that change had not happened. The risk people run there perhaps is that you might be putting a lot of effort and money into design work short of getting the building permit pulled. Luckily, we haven't really encountered, at least I haven't ever had to address a situation like that. So as I described earlier, an area variance, obviously, physical dimensions, so setback, which I'm sure you all know what that means, frontage, height, bulk, which means the overall volume of a structure. I don't think we even really have a whole lot of bulk-based provisions in our code. Density restrictions. I suppose a density restriction, if somebody wanted to address a impervious surface restriction, maybe that fits into there. The council of a city can specify an expiration date for a variance granted if that date relates to a specific date by which the action authorized by the variance must be commenced. So for instance, if somebody is seeking to build a new structure, you grant them the variance. It is something that could be included in an ordinance to say, okay, you now must actually commence that construction within one year, or your variance is void. A variance that's sort of vested, so to speak, you know, once they build something or commence to build something, it does run with the land. It's permanent. It is essentially a permanent change to the zoning of that property. A concept that comes up from time to time is what's called spot zoning. That would be if somebody comes in and says, I just want a zoning change to my property. Now, this actually pertains, you know, more to the city council action because they're the ones that vote to change the zoning code. But that would be where somebody is asking the city council to change the zoning designation just for their property, basically for the benefit of the property owner. Now, the council can make changes like that if they appropriately find that it's in the public's interest to do so. For instance, you might see that with some sort of like institutional use or something like, hey, we know that we need to have another elementary school, and this is the neighborhood that's underserved. We're going to change this one property to institutional. That's not for anybody's personal, you know, pocketbook benefit. That's for the benefit of the community that needs this additional school. So it's very likely that a challenge to that based on it being spot zoning would fail. But similar to what I described about the convenience store earlier, if the council wanted to just grant the person that change, that would likely constitute spot zoning, and it would allow essentially anybody to file a lawsuit asking that to be precluded, most like you would see a lawsuit from neighboring property owners in a situation like that. Frankly, if you look back at the history we had with the QuickTrip and the store gas stations on the east side and the permitting process that we went through with that, I'm surprised we didn't see at least the rumblings of a little bit of legal action in that regard. But ultimately, those were approved. So in exercising the authority that is granted to the board, you have some pretty broad flexibility in your decisions. It does not have to be just yes, no to what's being asked for. You can reverse, affirm, whole, or in part, or may modify orders, requirements, decisions. There's some flexibility there. Now, most of the time, the decisions you're being asked to make, just by their nature, are going to be sort of binary, yes, no, up, down. But there is some flexibility in the sense that if somebody was asking for a six-foot relief from setbacks, and the city's position is, we don't think that any variance to the area, you know, any area variance could be granted, you could say, well, how about three? And the person probably should say, thank you, okay, I'll find a way to try to work with that. And lastly, there is a provision, actually, this relates to what Tom had asked me about just before the meeting. There's a provision in the statute that says, "Costs shall not be allowed against the board unless it shall appear to the court," so this would be on appeal, "that the board acted with gross negligence or in bad faith or with malice in making the decision appealed from." So basically, if you, you guys really fly off the handle and make a crazy decision, somebody can go to court, and the city might end up having to pay for their lawyer. So don't do that. So just a couple little small details here. The city cannot be what's, there's a concept called a stopple. There's different types of a stopple, but the general word just means a legal doctrine that stops you from doing something. And in this case, it's that the city cannot be stopped from exercising zoning authority. So for instance, if the building inspector were to issue a building permit in, well, issue a building permit in error or make some representation to somebody verbally, oh, yeah, you can do that on that property, and then it comes to light that it would be a violation of the zoning code, person wouldn't be able to say, oh, you made that promise, and therefore, I'm allowed to do this, no matter what. They can try to make those arguments. Those arguments would likely fail. And, yeah, a municipality cannot be stopped from seeking to enforce a zoning ordinance, but a circuit court has authority to exercise this discretion in deciding whether to grant enforcement. Upon the determination of an ordinance violation, the proper procedure for a circuit court is to grant an injunction enforcing the ordinance, except where it's presented with compelling equitable reasons to deny it. There's where the equity comes back in. But that's for a circuit court to do at that, at that level. And what I mentioned about having to create a record of why your decision is being made, here's one articulation of that from, from a case that related to billboards, I believe, down in Madison. Says, "A board of appeals may not simply grant or deny an application with conclusory statements that the application does or does not satisfy the statutory criteria, but shall express on the record its reasoning why an application does or does not meet the statutory criteria. Even when a board's decision is dictated by a minority, these controlling members of the board ought to be able to articulate why an applicant has not satisfied its burden of proof on unnecessary hardship, or why the facts of the record cannot be reconciled with some requirements of the ordinance or statute. A written decision is not required as long as a board's reasoning is clear from the transcript of its proceedings." Now, that last little bit there, saying a written decision is not required, well, strictly speaking, that is the law. It's usually a good idea to have a written decision. That's why I think at least some of you have familiarity with the decision form that we had created previously, which doesn't have to be the end-all, be-all. It's not like you must use this, end of story. However, if a decision conforms to that form you've used, it's likely that it would include all of the essential elements of explaining why a decision was made. So with regards, yeah, this, going back to the a stopple element there, here's another, another quote from a case here. In deciding, so this would be when you're evaluating whether a hardship was self-created. And obviously, that's going to be fact, pattern, determinate. So in deciding whether to grant a variance, a zoning board of appeals may consider the role local municipal officials played in a zoning violation when determining whether hardship was self-created and whether strict enforcement of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. So even though the city can't be stopped from enforcing based on a misstatement or inaccurate statement about the zoning code, you are allowed to take that into consideration, which frankly seems like the fair thing to do. Obviously, you'd have to evaluate that based on the facts that are before you. And with regards to Ziervogel, that has been clarified a little bit. That was the one that restated the area variance rules. A later court said that, while the strict rule for no reasonable use cannot be determinative on its own, it doesn't mean that you can't take use into a factor for an area variance analysis. It's just that the area variance, excuse me, the use questions can't overwhelm all of the other considerations with regards, with regards to the property, including you have to consider the uniqueness of the property, the purpose of the ordinance, and the effect of a variance on public interest. So public interest will pop up all the time. Any decision that's made by a zoning board of appeals is always going to be required to satisfy the public interest. Now, there's no rule that says here's what the public interest is. But sometimes you see scenarios where it would clearly not be satisfied by taking a certain action. And obviously, anytime a case comes before you, you'll hear arguments about that element. So that's about everything I had to discuss today. And obviously, I can try to my best to answer any questions anyone has.
Thank you, Logan. Can you mark Lynn here at 4:51?
Sorry for being late.
Yeah. Logan, I have a question.
Sure.
Is this board similar to the board of review, where we're quasi-judicial and we hear the city's argument and the plaintiff's argument, or the appeals argument, and then who is our legal counsel or staff if we have a question?
Sure. So it's similar in that both, and just for everybody's information, the board of appeals is where you go if you have a...
For the review.
Oh, board of review, excuse me. This is the board. The board of review is where you go if you have a dispute over your tax assessment. And that is an intensely statutory-driven process there. I'd say it actually has a little bit more rigidity than what this board has. The difference, they're similar in that they're both quasi-judicial, but they're different in the sense of the burden and presumptions. So here, the person who's seeking the variance has the burden to show that all of these criteria are met. And with the board of review, it, this is a bit of an overgeneralization, but it starts with the presumption that the assessment is correct, so long as the assessor can demonstrate that they followed the manual in creating the assessment. So it's sort of like, if that box is checked, then it's presumed correct. The person has to show otherwise. With regards to legal counsel, typically what you'll see is that I would be assisting the zoning administrator in presenting and defending the recommendation of the zoning administrator, and there would be outside counsel hired by the city to provide... administrator, and there would be outside counsel hired by the city to provide legal advice to the board. Typically, in the past, we've used Dean Dietrich for those purposes. Because it is absolutely essential that the board have its own independent legal counsel, otherwise it, you start asking questions and nobody's there to answer them because I can't answer them for you.
That's why we pull in Dean Dietrich.
Yeah.
And the people that are, you know, looking for, you know, an appeal on something, they also can bring a legal counsel, as we've seen before. And pretty soon, you'll be, we'll be outnumbered by the lawyers in the room, but, you know, that's how we, you know, can get all those straight answers on what we need to make our decision.
Yeah. It starts to look just kind of like a courtroom, you know? We'll have tables set up here for the parties, plaintiff, defendant, respondent, petitioner, characterize them however you want, applicant, zoning administrator, and then a third attorney to help you arrive at a legally sound conclusion. Any other questions? Or is everyone just want to get out of here and enjoy the nice weather?
You were talking about bulk.
Right.
And over the past year, we've seen the tiny houses come in. Would that constitute, I mean, that could really throw off zoning ordinances, but they've gone through that, but would that constitute more density, more bulk? Are we going to think we'll be seeing people making appeals to our board?
So, the primary issue you see from a zoning perspective with tiny homes, accessory units, et cetera, is that traditional codes, when you evaluate those through traditional codes, typically the conclusion you derive at is that they're prohibited use. They're just not, they're flat out not allowed. So then, I mean, obviously, we've had quite a bit of discussion, to put it lightly, about our accessory unit ordinance. You essentially have to create the avenue for those to exist under the zoning code. To get from that to a dispute that comes here, boy, I hope not. It'd feel real silly to have a brand-new ordinance and then almost immediately have a dispute that comes to the zoning board of appeals. But with regards to the bulk requirement, like I said, the volume of a building as opposed to height or footprint or setbacks, typically the place that you actually see that come into play is more with regards to fire codes, especially on commercial structures. You're evaluating total indoor cubic footage with regards to various criteria, and then obviously for, you know, HVACs, efficiency, and that type of stuff. So, even though it is technically written in here, I, like I said, I can't think of a single zoning, can you think of any bulk?
One potential is if, from like a historic sense, if historic would deny a design review request, they would appeal to counsel, counsel will deny. I believe they could in turn appeal to zoning board of appeals.
So you're just talking about in terms of...
Specifically about bulk standards, because I know our design guidelines have standards regarding that.
Okay. Yeah, that might be, that might be an example.
Outside of that, that's the only scenario where I could speculate.
And then you're running into historical, so they've got their own set of rules and standards. And, you know, if somebody wanted to appeal to that, that would be, you know...
Yeah. Anytime the historic preservation elements come into play, it's whole other encyclopedias of law that come into the picture there.
Mr. Tiffany, do you have any questions? Are you still with us? I see an empty chair.
I am, I am still here, yes.
Okay.
No questions as of this point, just taking it in.
Maybe one topic you could talk about a little bit, Logan, is more about deliberation in closed session.
Sure.
What is that? How is it done? Are there benefits? Are there drawbacks to that?
Typically, so another thing to remember here, and just very quickly touch on, these are open meetings, open to the public, but I think of them as being open more in the sense that a courtroom is open as opposed to, you know, a city council meeting being open. We have it written in our ordinances that any person can comment on any topic at the council meeting. You come up to the podium, you state your name and address, and you get a certain number of minutes. Whereas with this, you've got parties, interested parties there, who have carefully put together a case. And the idea of just like somebody who happened to, you know, come down here to the meeting, throwing in their two cents and it becoming part of the record is probably not the way you want to proceed. So, instead, you have the two parties and they put on their case. And because the burden is on the property owner to demonstrate all these elements, they would go first. They put on their case, present exhibits, they can call witnesses. Typically, they will, you know, usually the property owner will call themselves as a witness, either represented by counsel or proceeding on their own. And then once they've rested their case, so to speak, then the city can respond to it. You can possibly have, you know, some back and forth, like, okay, now they can rebut and decide how many times you want to let the tennis ball go back and forth. And then the record will be before the board and you need to come up with a way to make a decision. Usually, that's going to mean entering into a closed session to consult with legal counsel. The idea being that if you do that right out in the open, it's just sort of unfair to the decision-making process because people aren't going to feel the ability to be candid about the possible outcomes or likelihood of appeal or their determinations about who they felt was credible and who they felt was less credible. It's something where a closed session certainly is allowed under the open meeting statutes. It's written right in there, a quasi-judicial body can go into closed session for deliberations. You can take as much time as you'd like with that, but I think in some past cases, we've seen that last anywhere from forty-five to ninety minutes, depending. And the staff just sort of sits pat and waits patiently. And then if you think it's going to take much longer than that, you can always send a representative out to let everyone know. And then it can even be that, you know, there's an adjournment in order to allow for, allow for legal counsel for the board to prepare a draft or proposed set of written findings, which could then be distributed and reviewed and then acted on in open session at a later date. And then, you know, the proposed written decision could be part of the packet that's available to the public so that people can see it ahead of time. And then you can vote on whether or not to adopt those findings.
Yeah. And that is a really, that's a really important part of our rules and on our board. We don't want to turn this into a shouting match. We don't want the peanut gallery coming in like you're sitting in a council until ten thirty at night because everybody gets to say so. These are strict rules on these meetings that we will be following. And as chair or whoever is, you know, the vice chair at that time, we will not be letting people bust in and say this and this because that will completely deflect from what we're trying to have our meeting for. So, as that stands, it doesn't usually happen, but just in case.
I've said this before, I view it pretty differently. I view it that it should be a public hearing, that neighbors should be able to weigh in on whether a variance or other thing that's not allowed under the ordinance, whether their neighbor is going to be allowed to do that or not. Neighbors typically are not experts in the zoning ordinance, but they are experts in what's happening in their neighborhood and may see things that I don't see or zoning staff doesn't see because they're not there twenty-four seven. So I think it's important to allow neighbors to provide information. I think in order to make that meaningful, they need to know what the variance standards are. You know, it's not based on their opinion, it's based on what they've observed, what facts they can provide or evidence they can provide.
I think that you make some good points, and certainly those are decisions up to the board to make. There was one experience we had, though, where there was a board of appeals meeting that had two different variance requests on the same meeting. And some of the people who were there relevant to one of them were just like, well, I happen to be here in the room, so I'm going to throw in my two cents on the other one. They didn't live near or own property anywhere near the property relevant to that. So, the idea that neighbors could chime in in a way that's meaningful to the record, I agree a hundred percent. The extent to which somebody who lives maybe even outside of Stevens Point, certainly less so.
Right. I would also add that there's a BOA case out there, it's Roberts versus Manitowoc County BOA, and it was about their decision-making. And one of the things that the court said in that decision is it's fine for a BOA to set a time limit and say each person gets three minutes or whatever their time limit is. So it doesn't have to go on, you know, all evening. You can set a time limit, and BOAs can do that, and that way the neighbors can have some say, but they need to keep it concise.
Wouldn't the neighbors usually be vetted out before they make it, makes it to a board of zoning appeals? Because they would have gone through counsel, planning?
No. They could, they could simply go to the zoning office and be denied a permit because what they're proposing isn't legal under the ordinance, and then they would come to us.
Yeah, that's right. And, you know, certainly if they're, either the property owner or the city would be free to call specific neighbors or, you know, any number of them as witnesses, which we've actually, you know, we've had that occur. In fact, I think the last time we had an action, the house on Reserve Street, I believe that several of the neighbors were called as witnesses by the property owner. So again, this is, these are the exact conversations to have and the exact pros and cons of all these decisions with regards to witnesses and comments from the public.
Tenants, and they could, you know, they, I would think that people would bring them in as their own witnesses, but I just don't see the general public coming in to stay. But if it is a neighbor and they do have, do have a stick in that fight.
Does, do any of our decisions set precedent for future? Let's say that we gave a variance on a setback. Does that, could that be, come back later, that another neighbor or another person come in? Will you have granted that variance based on blah, blah, blah?
So if a person could demonstrate that their property is so similar and their situation is so similar to one that was treated differently in a previous action, I think they would just have a good case to make that some other element was present that wasn't, you know, the board's decision was clearly not based on what it's articulating because I was similarly situated to this other person where they acted differently. But the chances of two different property owners coming in with such similar situations where it's, one is granted and the other one isn't, is probably very, very, very low likelihood on account of the unique property condition element. Having two different properties that are unique in exactly the same way, you almost start to think, well, maybe this, maybe we just need to write a new provision in the code that takes into account this type of configuration or scenario.
Maybe one question I'm thinking of now is, could the zoning board of appeals essentially provide a recommendation to staff if they find that a certain ordinance provision has merits for being amended? And if so, how? Could they provide a recommendation to city staff saying, we, you know, we recommend this ordinance provision be amended? Just how?
Yeah, absolutely. That wouldn't carry any sort of, you know, procedural weight with regards to the zoning code amendment process through plan commission. But absolutely, I mean, the board of appeals, if they felt that, if they were, for instance, if a zoning board of appeals arrived at a decision to deny a variance but felt, even though they believed in that legal reasoning and that conclusion, but they felt that this was something that needed to be addressed or changed, they could write that right into the written decision. We are recommending to the plan commission that they take up this particular portion of the code to take into consideration X. I don't think there's anything wrong with that at all.
Any other questions on the board? Mr. Tiffany?
Nothing at the moment.
I got one question. So like with, this is quasi-judicial, and I know with judicial proceedings, a lot of times, like, there's a separation, you have to speak through counsel and whatever. So if someone puts an application in to come to us, are we able to do a site visit and talk to them or something? Or is it sort of like you're separated and you talk through counsel or something like that prior to the proceeding?
That's a great question. I would always strongly recommend to any board that's sitting in a quasi-judicial capacity not to go out and do your own fact-finding in that extent because it just, you might not, you know, you might not gain any information that's not otherwise available in the record as it's created. But you do create a basis on which somebody could challenge the validity of your decision, whether it's this way or that way, to say, oh, there, you know, this commissioner was acting with a slightly different set of information than the group as a whole and therefore, you know, the record is compromised. So we'd always recommend that that not be what occurs. However, I think it's absolutely reasonable if a, you know, if a case came before the board and there were presentations with graphics and images and all that, and then the board decided, this sounds like a really, really strange scenario, we'd like to see it with our own eyes, it is possible to convene a meeting of the board onsite. We just have to go through the normal notice provisions with regards to public meetings and all that. And for instance, we do see that pretty frequently with the historic preservation committee as relates to the facade improvement grant process. They'll go and actually see the building and see what's going on, and that happens somewhat frequently.
To piggyback on that, the board of review, you can't discuss anything prior to the meeting. So in a case like this, if somebody had a zoning appeal, you know, and they know all our, they got our names, came and knocked on the door and said, hey, I'd like to talk to you about this, we just, nope.
So, a situation kind of similar to that came up years back when I was on the common council. It related to, I think, the Life Skills Center that the school district wanted to construct on North Point Drive over by Spash. And the superintendent of schools at the time had invited the council members, and this was a conditional use process, which isn't really quasi-judicial exactly, but the superintendent of school had invited all the council members, one by one, to come meet office hours, chat about it. And I said, okay, sure, came by. And then that question was raised later on of, you know, does this run afoul of the requirement that these proceedings be held in public and all that? And it was a, it was a conditional use permit, so it's subject to a public hearing. And ultimately, some law was referenced, I can't remember exactly where it came from off the top of my head, but it basically said that, you know, that falls into, you know, a First Amendment right to petition your lawmakers. And in that case, you're talking about legislative representatives, you know, council members acting in a legislative capacity as opposed to a strictly quasi-judicial capacity where my suspicion is that the right of somebody to communicate directly with the decision-makers ahead of the hearing is probably curtailed to some extent. But my, you're certainly not obligated to engage in those conversations if somebody tries to have one with you. And in order to preserve the integrity of the proceedings, my recommendation would just be to politely decline to communicate with an applicant.
Anybody else? Well, that's about it. And we are looking at something next week possibly for board of zoning appeals meeting.
Not.
Were we talking sometime in July? I think we were talking about?
Sometime in July.
Oh, is that July 12th or 14th?
Correct.
Okay. Good.
But I'm sure clerk's office will reach out to you as far as definite day.
Okay.
Now, as an alternate, do we only come if they need a quorum? Or are we here all the time and do we vote or not vote?
So, you're certainly, you're certainly welcome to attend. And I think it would probably be valuable to attend to just at least, even if you're not going to be, you know, seated as a member that's hearing it for that particular one due to, you know, the need for quorum, seeing live reps of an actual hearing would probably be valuable.
Yeah, but with, you know, if any of the members of the board need to, you know, say, well, I got a vacation coming up, I got a medical emergency coming up, try to let us know, you know, beforehand, and then we can call on our alternates, because summers get busy, we're going to be here during the summer, or fall, or any time for people's lives. If there are no other questions from the board, I would make a motion to adjourn this meeting at 5:21. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Gresham. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.